Good evening. My name is Billy Higginbotham. I'm the current chairman. Somebody's moving the screen. I'm the current chairman of the City of Homewood Planning Commission meeting. Today is the August the 4th, 2020 Regular Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. With that, Fred, would you please call the roll?
All right. Mr. Foster. Mr. Higginbotham.
Here.
Chief Hill. Mr. Cronteras. Mr. Cronteras, I know you're here. Okay. Mr. Riddle. Mr. Riddle. Okay, thanks. Mr. Riddle.
Here.
Mr. Roberts. Mr. Thames. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Woods.
Here.
All right, thank you. We've got six, so we've got a quorum. Moving right along, minutes, there were no minutes. I guess there wasn't enough time to get them done because we had a short turnaround, two weeks into our last meeting. So we'll move right along. Communications from the chairman, I have none. Communications from vice chairman, Mr. Foster.
Yeah, thanks, Billy. So I circulated an email earlier today, Fred, I don't know if you saw it, set up a subcommittee meeting. So we're gonna hold that, which will be, that'll be the 18th. So we'll address the old business outline here. I've got also today from Ms. Smith and Sherry, the updated pre-permit to review and crosswalk to the ordinance, to make sure everything is lining up correctly. And so I will send that around to Billy, James, and the other subcommittee members. Hopefully by Friday, along with comments to the permeable surface document you circulated in May, as well as the setback request from the BDA. We will discuss those on the 18th for subcommittee, and then moving forward in September, full committee.
All right, thank you, Mr. Foster. Moving right along. This is an online meeting. It's being held in an effort to comply with social distancing requirements due to COVID-19 pandemic. There are three options to join. The first is to click on the link that was listed on the website. The second option is if you have a Zoom app, go to a meeting, and the third was to dial in by phone. And joining out online for those items that allow public comments, you will be told when to enter your name and address into the chat box if you want to speak about that item. You can speak once your name is called. Okay, moving right along.
Mr. Higginbotham.
Yes.
James Riddle. You put me in charge of chairman of the reelection committee.
Yes.
Would you like to have an update on that as well, or you want to wait until the end of the meeting?
Why don't we add that as item number seven?
Okay.
Election of officers.
That's listed as an agenda item, the very last agenda item is just already on there.
You're right, it is.
My bad.
Okay. Thank you, James, and thank you, Fred. Moving right along, item number one, old business. That we talked about briefly earlier, Jeff gave us a report. We are going to carry that over till the next meeting, which will be the September meeting, whatever date that is. What date is that, Fred?
I don't have a calendar in front of me either, but it's the first Tuesday in September.
Yeah, okay.
First of September.
First Tuesday in September. Okay, that is the first, okay.
That is the first day of September as well.
Okay, thanks. All right, moving right along, new item, new business, item number one, PC case, RC 20-08-01, Jason Hale, Willow Homes. Mr. Hale. Are you ready to present?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so, um, what this is, is an effort to rezone a piece of property on 3019 Firefighter Lane, just off downtown Homewood. Right now, it is an R5 zoning. A couple of years ago, I believe, there was a, there was an effort to put condos on this property, which did not pass. It wasn't something I was involved in. What we're trying to do is change it to R4, because R5 does not allow detached or single-family homes. And so just move it one classification to allow for a single-family residences. We want to build two there. It's really two lots. There's one old abandoned residence on it now that's vacant and really kind of non-compliant, rather than kind of weird situation. And we're proffering four restrictions that we believe could go with the rezone. I'll go ahead and read those out. Height restrictions on the homes to be consistent with MPD zoning. So, these would be 50-foot wide lots, so that would be 29 and 32. Side setbacks of nine feet and five feet for each lot. Front setbacks of 25 feet, and total lot coverage of no more than 50% of the impermeable surface. So what we were trying to do is put this somewhat in line with MPD. You know, so it's consistent with other homes in the neighborhood. But if you're familiar with this street, it's not an MPD street. I mean, it's got apartments on it, it's got some townhomes, it's got some commercial. So, you know, we're trying to find the best of both worlds. Trying to find the best result, I guess, for what we think would be a good fit for these two lots.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hale. This is, in a minute, we're gonna open up the public portion, so if anybody wants to speak regarding this, you'll need to follow the directions to enter your name and address into the chat box, and the host will will allow you to speak. Mr. Hale, one clarification I want to make is we, the planning commission cannot rezone something. We vote on something to rezone it. We vote on an application to rezone it, which is sent to the city council. City council is the only body that has the authority to rezone. So in that case, tonight, you, I think you've done this before, you realize that we're voting on it to send it to council, correct?
I do, yes. I haven't looked when the council meets, but I do know that this is to basically to recommend it, if one way or the other.
Right. Okay, and I guess, just for a point of clarification, before I open it up, you have proffered these restrictions because you realize that, A, the two houses that were recently built were of a similar character in nature, and B, you're trying to, I realize that there's a Heinz 57 mix in that area, but to the south of the main street there, I, let's see, what street is that?
That's Huntington.
Huntington, thank you. To the south of Huntington, it's more of a traditional neighborhood, in keeping with MPD regulations, correct?
Correct. Yeah, I was trying to, you know, when we did this with the two lots next door, that's a similar proffered we did, so I was trying to be consistent with what we did in that case.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll open this up for a public forum. Mr. Wallace, is there anybody in the chat? None, okay. Thank you. The public forum is closed. Commission members, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Higginbotham, I do. This is Brady Wilson.
Sure.
Mr. Hale, can you remind me, did Mrs. Cooley own the original lot next door that you already did?
No. No, I can't remember who owned it, but it was a different owner, so the prior situation there had two owners involved.
Her name was Barbara Strange, was the owner of 2031, that's under construction right now. Her son was managing it for her, she never came home.
So I've got some follow-up questions. Does Mrs. Cooley own the additional lot on the other side?
She owns this property, which is two lots. Really, it's the house that's there sits on one in the vacant spot. They're both as one property. They're originally plotted as two, so they show as two, but there's one house there.
Okay, there's not yet another house on the other side?
No.
Seeing that wrong, okay.
Correct, so this would, you know, the idea is this would be two lots, and then the next property is the, there's an apartment complex there, it's a red brick apartment complex that's not involved in this discussion.
Got it.
And it's on two lots as well, actually.
Right. Do you, um, do you happen to have any idea of Mrs. Cooley's other ownership properties in Homewood?
I actually don't. I haven't dealt with her. It's her family that's been involved in Realtors, so actually I haven't had any interaction.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further questions of the applicant or staff?
Hey, this is Jeff Foster. Jason, I've got a question on, I assume you're gonna park in the rear using the alley access?
Say that again, sorry, Jeff.
Parking in the rear using the alley access, is that the plan, or?
Um, most likely. I mean, it's, this is interesting in that it's not an alley, it's another, it's another road, but, yeah, most likely, what we've seen is people interested in this spot, want a garage, a parking off of that road. I will say the lot that's closest to the apartment has got a lot more slope, and it could be that the parking there makes more sense from the front, you know, but I don't know that.
Okay, gentlemen, if there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve PC case, RC 20-08-01, as presented by Mr. Hale, with the conditions of the height restrictions consistent with MPD zoning, side setbacks of nine and five for each lot, nine and five feet for each block, front setback of 25 feet, and the total lot coverage of no more than 50% of impermeable surface.
I'll serve him.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Riddle, and a second by Mr. Cronteras. Fred, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Foster?
Yeah.
Mr. Cronteras?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
This is Stuart Roberts. I think I'm, I'm, I skipped.
You joined us.
Okay.
I've been here, yeah, but I vote yes as well.
Okay, I didn't get you in the original roll call.
I might have been on mute, I'm sorry.
Hey, Fred?
Yes.
This is Nick Hill, I'm here as well. I've been here since you adjusted the agenda. I shot you a message, but I don't know if you had time to read it.
So, on this current vote, Dan, how do you vote, Chief?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so it's eight yeses and zero in opposition. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Hale, your case is approved. And we'll move on to item number two. We've got two items, item number two and item number three. They are both the same address. We will hear the discussion as one, as we've done in the past, and then we will vote separately on the two items. With that, we'll move to item number, or PC case number FD 20-08-02, in the presentation of AD 20-08-03. The applicant is LBYD Engineers, the owner is Sanford. Is their representative for the Sanford property on this, on this call?
Yes, this is Curtis Eaton with LBYD Engineers.
All right, thank you, Mr. Eaton, go ahead.
Yes, we're here to request approval of amended file development plan for the parcel located at 800 University Park Place. For those of you obviously familiar with this, piece of land that's located between the Sanford Track Complex and Shades Creek. It is adjacent to the drive for Homewood Hospital. And what Sanford is requesting to do in this area is install 15 cottage-style pre-manufactured housing units. Sanford's been faced with some housing challenges as a result of the COVID-19 outbreak, and this is an opportunity to deal with some quarantine issues associated with that. Basically, there will be 15 units, all one-bedroom. They're approximately 430 square feet apiece. They will be installed, and so what you call semi-permanent nature, they'll all be on concrete slabs with integrated foundation systems. And I can share my screen if it is possible to, I have a landscape plan here, if that would be beneficial, or what's the process for that?
Well, I think we all have one in our package, but, Mr. Wallace, would you go ahead and give Mr. Eaton? Yes, hang on, just a second. Street properties. Yep. You now have, you can now share your screen.
Okay, bear with me one second. Are you able to see my screen now?
Yes, we are, thank you.
Okay, so, for everybody that's watching, basically, the 15 units are shown here with a sidewalk connecting them all. Orientation on the plan, the track and soccer complex would be to the south. And we'll be constructing 15 new parking spaces on the side to serve these units with additional parking available at the track complex. So we have representatives from Sanford here, if there are any questions, but I will defer to the commission for any further questions.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll open it up for the public. Does anyone wish to speak about this from the public? If so, please submit in the chat.
Doesn't look like anybody at this time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wallace. The public portion is closed. Does any commission, well, let me ask you this, does any staff have anything to add to this presentation? Any remarks that may answer potential questions?
Now, others than to note that we did notify all adjacent properties, including residential properties, and that's maybe to the south, and that this is only a portion of a larger 15-acre tract, so, you know, this, as I said, the entire subject property technically is the 15-acre tract. This is just that portion that you saw outlined in the illustration that we're dealing with, so it's a, and as he made reference, there's an abundance of on-site parking for that soccer field of the racetrack to meet any, any parking requirements for this particular project.
All right, thank you, Fred. With that, does any commission member have questions?
I got, I got a, I got a question, Mr. President. For Sanford, these units, how many people will be allowed to live in it? Are there any restrictions about the number of people that will be living in it?
I'll ask Colin Cohen with Sanford to address that, I believe he's on the call.
Good evening. Yes, sir, the restrictions would be no more than two residents per unit. It would be very, the size of the rooms are comparable to our regular residential halls, the bedroom portion, and then these are fully stocked kitchens with their own individual bathroom units as well.
Okay, so there will be a restriction for two people per unit?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, this is Mark Woods. Explain to me, I didn't understand in the presentation, that these are gonna help for COVID and kind of as a area for quarantining? Can you elaborate on that? I mean, what's the future use of them, or is this really just simply, right now maybe used for COVID, but we're just adding more residential housing? Is that the case? I mean, I didn't understand that when you were presenting this.
The present need that brought about the discussion was trying to figure out the best way to remove potentially ill individuals while we're waiting test results from the main campus. Our feeling is that leaving a person in the residential hall population is the best way to create a hotspot that would then spread from Sanford into the broader community. Having made that decision, we then looked at whether or not we wanted to do something that was short-term or longer-term, and our feeling was that the expectation of our constituents, whether that's our parents, our students, or the city, was this should be built to Sanford standards. So when we refer to it as an intermediate-term residential community, we're building to a standard that would, certainly with the accommodations we're putting in, it'd be probably some of the nicest housing we have on campus, so that we could have an ongoing use, because we have unique housing needs that come up from time to time. So this is not something that is, by any stretch of the imagination, a FEMA trailer. It's something that is more permanent than that. Long-term, I don't, long-term meaning however many years down the road, I, if we were going to do residential housing there, I think we would go for a more probably a higher density use at the appropriate time. But the idea is to keep these in place for, I think in the original application, we said, up to 10 years, because that's the level of quality we want to put into them, because that's what people expect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Higginbotham, I just wanted to comment, recognize and appreciate Sanford's view that these are not supposed to be similar in any way to trailers, but it's hard to argue with the rendition on the pages that I'm looking at. As a result, extremely concerning for me. This is Brady Wilson. For long-term, a student housing.
And Brady, that's where I was going with this too. I don't, to me, it looks like, you know, a glorified, if you will, double-wide trailer with some skirting on it. I mean, and that bothers me, especially when I heard you say that, you know, 10-year of usage, we might could change all this. It seems to me that it's very temporary, and, and, I mean, if you're building something temporary, it's usually in the use of a trailer. I mean, and that's all that I can see here, and that, that does-
I support that, Mr. Woods, and I would add, we're, the adjacent properties are a commercial building and a high school.
Yeah.
Well, this is modular housing, this is not mobile homes, and there is a difference. Modular housing, according to Mr. Kendrick, is built to a standard, and it is, it equals or exceeds the standard building code. So this is not a mobile home. It, it is a modular home, which is allowed by the current code and the use. Because they're institutional property, they can have a whole host of mixes of uses. I had a conversation with Mr. Kendrick earlier today, and this is allowed.
May I offer some insight to those concerns? Because we were certainly aware of that. We checked with the National Fire Association, not the Manufacturing Home Association. And the safety ratings are equal to or in excess of one or two state-built, bedroom state-built homes. We decided to go with wind zone two, not wind zone one, even though it's not required for improved quality. The concrete pads is to create the lower profile, and the full shingled roof is a different, is definitely an upgrade, precisely out of the concern that we felt people might have about, that you're raising. So, you know, we, these are, the, well, yes, these are manufactured in the factory, by no means are these going anyway, these are not mobile, in the traditional sense of a trailer.
I believe also that there's a precedent for this, because when we redid the, 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 we placed the fire department in similar type units on this piece of property about, I don't know, eight, nine, 10 years ago, when we built a new firehouse. Is that not correct, Fred? You remember that?
I, I don't, I'm sorry.
This is Nick Hill. Oh, in 2008 or so, we moved into, we did move into mobile homes, and we built a Butler Building for the fire station to house it at Station One and Station Four, so Station One was up there where Station One is now, and Station Four is where this property was. But it was actually a trailer.
Yeah.
And so, but the other thing, and it just commented, it looks like you have a privacy fence here, and that's actually a private road by Sanford, if, if they wanted to, they could gate it off, and nobody would ever be, drive down there and look at it. So, I mean, that's their road.
Yes.
Nick, when you say that's their road, you're talking about University Park Place?
That, on that end, that's, yeah, Sanford actually owns that. Because I checked, because they wanted to put up a gate, and I asked them, I said, hey, you gotta find out if you own that, because you can't close it off if you don't own it. And they did the research and actually came back and said, yes, we own it.
Okay. So, I mean- Yeah. This is Jeff Foster, I have a couple of questions. What is the distance between the units? Also, the distance from Shades Creek, which is not far from here. Obviously, I understand you're planning to leave the existing vegetation as you move that way, but I am curious about that. A third question, you mentioned you're adding 15 parking spaces, and it looks like you have a walking path here. Have you given any thought to using some sort of permeable materials to help with stormwater, being so close to the creek? And then how are you handling the water? I mean, I understand that this is a relatively large piece, and it seems to be, but I am curious about that.
Curtis, do you want to address that, or would you like me to?
I can, I can start out. So the units are, I believe, a few feet apart, Colin, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We've met with staff and talked about the fire code restrictions on that, but we're in compliance there with the fire, required fire separation. The next question was distance from Shades Creek. I may have to do a quick measurement here, but we're actually well inside the tree line that's there. There's a, we're staying outside of the floodplain limits with these units. But give me one- But give me one second. I can do a measurement and tell you the actual distance from the creek itself. And then, as far as managing stormwater, everything will be sheet drained on this site to get good contact with vegetation. We are not planning on piping directly to the, to the creek. We're planning on everything sheet from the property. Just doing a purbius paving solution on that walkway.
Curtis, when you say sheet draining, are you sheet draining to University Park Place?
No, sir. It would be the opposite way to the north, towards the creek.
Okay.
Mr. Higginbotham, this is Vicki. Parcel that sits north of this one is at the least, at the minimum, is, is 100 feet wide. So the back of these would be a big 100 feet from the creek.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The current fence that is placed will not, it's, that's, that's the back line. We're not moving that fence. We're building between the current fence forward toward Lake Shore. I mean, toward University Park Place. I'm sorry.
There is a representative from Sanford that would like to speak.
Sure. Go ahead.
No, I, I was just trying to join the conversation in case I was- This is Buck Brock with Sanford University.
Does it meet the parking? Does it have all the parking requirements needed?
Yes, as I said, this, this, it's, it's a 15-acre track of property, even though they've allocated 15 spaces for the trailers. All that parking around the track and all going towards the office buildings, all that parking on the, on the track, I mean, the parcel would be available to help meet parking needs. So it's, you're looking at that large 15-acre track and all that parking. So it's not an issue for parking.
Mr. Higginbotham, I'm sorry, just, I want to, another clarification from an earlier comment. So initial use is temporary housing for, for students, I assume, or a temporary amount of time within a term who need to be quarantined. I wanted to have them in the general residential halls. So we're talking about the potential of 15 of these units that could have multiple students in one given term at, I guess, 15-day intervals until they're quarantined long enough?
Let me, Colin, let me, let me take this. This is, this is Buck Brock, and I'm with Sanford University.
Please, please.
Hello?
Please continue, Mr. Brock.
This entire project is initially driven by the, you know, by the COVID-19 crisis. As an institution of higher education, we are required to, to do a lot of things that other businesses aren't required to do because of our residential nature. And one of those is to make provisions for residents who may test positive or may have come into contact with someone who has COVID-19 and been exposed. Our housing on campus does not lend itself to quarantine and isolation-type situations. For example, we have a lot of dormitories-type rooms that, if they're private rooms, they share a bath with another room. We have, we have community restrooms which are not allowed. You know, the quarantine and isolation rules, which are the state of Alabama and, and the Justin County Health Department. So you've got to have a private bath, you know, separate entrance, isolation from other people, preferably HVAC system and air circulation that is, that is independent from units beside you so it doesn't circulate that way. And so we are not well-suited on the main campus to do that. So our thought was, we would, because we have to do something, is to, is to develop this village on this piece of property where there is no other housing at this point in time with individual units. Where during this period of time, and I have no idea how long this COVID-19 mess is going to last, is we would use it for quarantine and isolation. I would expect during this period of time, it'd be single occupancy because they've got to be isolated and they've got to be quarantined from other people. It, the investment in this, I'll tell you, is, is about $1.9 million. So it's rather expensive to provide, you know, quarantine for however long this thing lasts. So the intermediate term, as it's described here as a residential community, is intended. And what we hope to be able to do after this is over is to have an opportunity to recoup, you know, some or all of our investment, hence the intermediate-term nature of this as it's described, and the possibility of having student housing, students residing in this, in this housing. We have security cameras over there. We have the blue light, you know, phones for security, all the type things that we have related to housing and security and surveillance and, and, and such as we do on our, on our main campus. So that's how we get into this thing. And having some number of years after it's over to, to have a chance to get out of it is what we're, is what, what we're, was what we're trying to do. It in no way represents our, our, our interest in, in, in how we would see this property being permanently developed over a longer term. You know, clearly, it's not, you know, consistent with, with what we like to do on our main campus. But for this purpose, we think it could work very well with, with very nice landscaping and, 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 and doing some things that, you know, you might not normally see with, with, with a development like that. So that's how we get, get into this. I saw a question pop up a moment ago about renting hotels. And yes, we have investigated that. We have investigated, you wouldn't believe how many things we've investigated. The hotels do not want, you know, sick people. They do not want students or anyone who has tested positive or, or think may have been exposed to, you know, to COVID-19. Making students who are well and haven't been exposed move out of their room to make room for a student who has been exposed doesn't work very well either. And I get back to the comment earlier that the, the housing that's on campus just does not lend itself very well to, you know, to isolation quarantine housing in the first place. But yes, we have investigated many options trying to avoid having to make this kind of, of, of investment. And if we were to create this housing somehow on campus, it would have to be vacant. So we would have significant loss of revenue because, you know, we're not going to charge somebody for being, you know, quarantined. We've got to move them out of wherever they are that they are paying for into someplace that they're not paying for. So that's how we get to where we are.
So, Mr. Brock?
Yes.
James Riddle, my question, just listening to what you're saying. In the near term for the COVID-19, will these units sit empty until the time that you may need the use of a quarantine facility?
Yes, but I'm pretty sure that, that they will not sit empty long.
Well, yeah, I can see that. I can see. And you mentioned the HVAC system. Would these be your normal HVAC systems? Or would this be the units that are normally attached to this type building? Prefabbed building of sorts?
I'm going to defer that to Colin or to Curtis, if I may.
These are one and a half ton split units.
Okay. Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Best call.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Are there any further questions?
Hey, Billy, this is Jeff again. I, I had a little audio issue. I don't know if I quite heard the response related to my question about the, any thought given for the parking since that's a low-impact area? If that's a permeable surface or if that's even an option? And then in the distance to Shades Creek, as well as any landscaping on the outside of this privacy fence? Because looking at an aerial shot, there's a, a gap there, if I'm looking at it correctly, between that and the trail.
Yeah, the questions were answered. Vicki, do you want to go ahead and repeat what you said about the distance from Shades Creek?
Between this parcel and Lake Shore, and it is at its narrowest 100 feet wide.
Okay, then I think the question was, how far is it from Shades Creek?
That's, well, Shades Creek is then on the north side of that. So it's 100-plus feet away at its narrowest.
This is Curtis. The distance is approximately 130 feet, you know, slightly, but it's approximately 130 feet. And that's measuring from the fence that's currently there on that side of the parcel.
All right. Thank you.
As far as the parking, you know, we were trying to go with a, a concrete parking surface, you know, for long-term durability. I mean, we could, from a purbius parking, I mean, the cost is drastically higher to go to a purbius paver. I mean, we could consider going back to a gravel, but that would be a discussion with Sanford.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. We also asked about landscaping. Someone said about, earlier I heard discussion about a fence. Whoever said that, can you walk us through that again?
Certainly. The landscaping we're putting in is, is quite, quite dense. It's, it's over $100,000 worth of landscaping around each one of the individual units, and then along the front, where the light poles are and the, and the grass berm that is there now will not be disturbed. It's behind that, creating an open grassy area, and then putting up one of the, the permanent signs like we have in front of Sanford Hall and other places to integrate it to the campus. The, the fence that is in place, we're planning on leaving in place with the screening because we want to reduce around three sides of it because we want to eliminate the possibility for people to be able to try to peek inside the housing units, obviously. The, we, at this time, because we're leaving the fence where we were, we have not had any discussion about doing anything beyond the fence line because we just didn't want to disturb any of that, anything that got close to the creek. We just want to come forward from the fence line. But it's, it's, it's very densely, the landscaping budget for an acre and a half is pretty extensive.
Yes, it does sound very generous. And like most institutions, it's a delicate balance between providing the right amount of landscaping and having the right security systems in force because many times, the more that you landscape, you prohibit security.
Yes, sir, and thank you for bringing that up. We did have Tommy Taylor, our police chief, review all the plan. While we don't, in a public forum, discuss our security umbrella, he is very, very comfortable that we will have direct line of sight to the front door of every single one of these units.
Thank you. Well, if there are no further questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Higginbotham, I've got one more question for Sanford. If the, if these units are built primarily for the coronavirus or quarantine students, what would happen, let's say hypothetically, January the first or the month of January of 2021, there is no more coronavirus?
They are, they're, the perk, the catalyst for doing these and having this discussion was the coronavirus. We've tried to build them to a standard that would be very suitable for, very suitable for ongoing residential use, hence they have full kitchens. Most of them have stainless steel appliances, large screen TVs. It's, it's a very high amenity type of arrangement to make them appropriate for, to make it very desirable, longer-term housing. But-
Yeah. When, when we get through the coronavirus, our plan would be to use it, you know, would be to offer it for student housing. This would probably be upperclassmen, could be graduate students, could be married students for that matter because of its, because of its location. And, and what we're trying to do is to recapture that, that, at least have an opportunity to recapture that $1.9 million investment. If we just dismantled this immediately after the coronavirus crisis passes, whenever that is, we'd lose a whole lot of money. And, and we'd rather not be placed in that kind of position. And we really don't see another alternative, a good workable alternative that works for the Sanford community and the broader community than this. This allows us to fully isolate students who need to be isolated. You know, as you know, we, we cannot, and we would not want to, use any of the houses around the perimeter of, of, of the campus. You know, we can move all of our students out of those houses, and, and we certainly wouldn't want to, you know, make a pitch to you that, 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 that this would be an opportunity for that. So we just see it really as kind of a win-win, win-opportunity. And, and when we can retrieve that investment, we would have the opportunity to, to dismantle it, to sell those units, which would, would help us recruit, recoup some of that investment. But if we did that too soon, frankly, we'd take a, we'd take a real bath on this. And if we had a better option, this would be, when we're on campus in existing housing, we would not be, we would not be presenting this.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
This, this is Sherri Williams. I am the city's planner. Typically, I am involved in zoning board cases and not as much in planning commission, in planning commission. But with Vicki being out of the office, when they came in for their initial meeting to discuss this plan, I was the one who participated in that meeting. My first question to them was, explain to me, you know, how all of this is going to work? And I thought maybe I could shed a little bit of light on that conversation because these, this conversation hasn't happened during this meeting. What was explained to me was these students will be transported to these units. Some students don't have cars on campus, and frankly, you know, they don't really need their cars when they're down there. So they would be shuttled from main campus to these units. In this area will be- In this area will be, um, a person, a, a staff person from Sanford who, or whoever they designate, who would be there as like the guardian type person or the representative from Sanford who will be their contact, um, each of the students' contact. Meals would be, um, brought to the students from the main campus if they want to have food of their own in these units. They are capable of doing that, which perhaps a parent would bring them or something like that. I, they will also have, um, internet access to, um, online classes so that they can continue to study as they feel up to it. Some of these students may test positive but not have symptoms or have very mild symptoms and can continue to study and continue to participate in classes, um, so that they don't miss any of that. Each of these units, um, has its own self-contained air conditioning and heating unit. They have a little patio area so that they can get outside and not feel like they're, that they're trapped. But it's not like they would be wandering around or anything like that. All of the, um, garbage and, and from the food and things like that, they have a designated area over to the side. And it's going to be enclosed. But, you know, and that's where all of that will, will go to. Each of the units has their, has been assigned an address in case there is a 911 issue and someone needs something. Um, each of the units will have, um, a security system. It's my understanding and I'm, this is from my last conversation was that, um, each unit would have a simply safe. Um, is that still correct?
Mostly so, yes. I'm sorry. Mostly so. We made the decision to wire them directly to our panel, uh, across the main campus with operations. Uh, it was a very significant investment, but we wanted them to be able to be monitored from, for fire, safety, et cetera, from the main campus so we could put people straight over there. Whereas the simply safe system would have gone through a third-party vendor. Uh, we will, we will have, uh, alarm systems, uh, audible things on the doors. So if anybody were to come in, the resident would hear it. And, and, uh, they'll be under the normal Sanford, uh, security protocols as well. We hesitated and decided not to do anything with simply safe with any sort of camera because it's an internet-based, uh, uh, system. And we are not about to put a camera that somebody might be able to hack in one of the, in one of those, uh, facilities. That would be up to an individual student if they were to live there long-term, but we don't see that. Uh, but thank you for bringing up the point about there being a Sanford, uh, person who will be, uh, there at all times. Uh, appreciate that. I apologize for leaving that out.
Um, you know, I have a, uh, college-age student and so even though I am the city's planner, I'm, I'm also a mom. And, and so a lot of the questions that I asked during our meeting with Sanford was kind of from a mom's standpoint, you know, will my child be safe if my child were here? Will my child have, um, an adult on site who they can contact if they need something? You know, how will my child eat? And all of those questions were answered, um, very well and I, and, and Sanford's plan for ongoing monitoring of the students, in my opinion, is extremely thoughtful and they, they will handle it. I just, I felt a whole lot better once I knew that there was going to be a staff person there who would be on call 24/7 for so, um, to help these children if they need it. But that's really all I wanted to say. I just wanted to, since I had been a part of the original meeting, I would just wanted to, um, let y'all know what had happened during that time and what we had discussed.
I would add.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
And if I may, I would add that when we get through this crisis and if this becomes, um, housing, uh, to, to augment our housing needs, um, there would be a, what we call RAs, Resident Assistance, uh, or some type of university personnel that would reside in one of these units, just like we have, uh, you know, RAs in all of our, uh, residential facilities on campus. The same would be the case, uh, with this on an ongoing basis. So it's not like it's just, uh, sitting over there, uh, freewheeling on its own. That would not be the case.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Are there any further questions?
Mr. Brock, I'm sorry, I have one more question. Do you happen to know how much vacant space is available in the prior Southern Progress facility?
We have none, um, in the two buildings that, um, that, that, that we have occupied with the College of Health Sciences. My understanding is there may be a little bit, um, with, with the merit, in the Meredith, um, building. But, uh, we have, we have no space, no vacant space over there.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve PC case FD 20-08-02. This is a request of the final development plan. It's to permit the development of 50, of, uh, Lake Shore Village an intermediate-term residential community of 15 high amenity, tight-style houses designed to meet the multiple residential needs of the university.
Don't move.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, who made the motion, please?
James Riddle.
And who made the second, please?
Uh, Stuart Roberts.
Thank you. Fred, would you please call the roll?
All right. Mr. Foster? Chief Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Cronteras? Mr. Cronteras? Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Woods?
No.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes. By my count, that was four to three in favor. And we didn't hear from Mr. Cronteras. Mr. Cronteras, did you abstain? It doesn't look like he's.
Yeah, I think he's frozen.
He's the best wax figure I've ever seen.
It looks blank on my screen, so let's go with that, four to three. Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Cronteras back on? Okay, moving.
Yeah, I was wait, I was waiting for him. He has not yet.
Okay. Do you see him, Mr. Wallace?
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes. Hello?
Mr. Higginbotham, John Cronteras. I never heard, uh, my name to vote yes or no because I had a bad connection.
Okay. Your name was called. Are you for or against?
I voted no.
Okay, well then it's four to four. And it's a tie.
So.
Was Chief Hill, he was with us, is he? No longer with us?
I'm here.
Right. And how did you vote? I'm sorry of that.
I voted yes.
Okay, all right. All right, he was, okay, you're, you're, it is four to four, okay.
Okay, uh.
May I ask what this means? This is Buck Brock.
Well, to be quite honest, I think we need to have a discussion with legal counsel tomorrow and we'll have to get back to you on that.
Well, if I may, um, you know, I don't want to be out of line, but I, I would feel like to, uh, to, to the no votes, uh, to consider the, the implications of, of this. It puts us in an ex, in an extraordinary, you know, extraordinarily difficult situation, uh, without having to be, without being able to provide for appropriate, uh, isolation or, or, what we need to do for students who may be exposed during this crisis. And we have tried our very best to present a, you know, a, a workable, uh, intermediate-term, um, plan. Not a long-term, permanent plan. This is not how this property is going to be used in the long-term. And I would just beg some cooperation and understanding. You know, and work with us in the same way that we're working with the high, with, with the high school across the street on parking, uh, on this, this property, uh, for the next three years. While y'all work to try to solve, you know, the, the school's parking problem over there, we're going to have your students parking in their parking lots at, uh, at, at, at the track and field as well as over at our inter-mural fields. And we just need some help, folks. And so I would really appeal to one of the negative votes to, to reconsider. And in time, uh, this will all be dismantled. And, 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 and something, um, more consistent with what we develop on a permanent basis is, um, you know, will, will come up there. We are growing. Um, I don't know what our aroma is going to be this fall exactly, but it's going to be, uh, in excess of, of, of 900 students. Right now it could be 950, uh, which means.
Mr. Brock, Mr. Brock, that's, that's 950 freshmen. We will have 5,700 students on the Sanford campus this fall.
And about 2,400 residents, which continues to, you know, depress our housing needs. So my, my guess would be before, before too long, uh, we're going to be proposing some new housing, residential housing, which could well be on this property, uh, that could take the place of this. But right now, we don't have another, we don't have a better plan. And I think we've done a good job in, 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 in trying to present this in the best possible way that we can. And I don't see it, um, as, as, because of its intermediate term, is setting any kind of precedence. I just, I just don't. Please help us.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
This Greg Cobb.
Yes.
If I'm, unless somebody tells me I'm wrong, and the field, this goes to city council, uh, from planning commission. And so we could put it on the council agenda in the morning. City council meets on Monday and perhaps we could resolve this. No way to say, they, yeah, that's right. They made on Monday.
Okay. Well, that was item number two. Let's go ahead and vote on the amended development plan, which is item number three, AD 20-08-03. Well, let me stop for just a second. Mr. Brock, is that sufficient to you? To go to council on Monday or whenever it can be scheduled?
If, if there's not a, if there's not a negative vote that's willing to reconsider, you know, we take what we, 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 we take what we're given, but I can tell you that we have students. We already have athletes on campus.
Mr. Brock, uh, Mr. Brock, uh.
Someone, someone.
Mr. Cronteras, I believe he's, go ahead, Mr. Cronteras.
Sounds like Mr. Cronteras is trying to ask me a question, but I, I cannot hear him or understand him. If somebody else can and wants to relate, I'll do my best to respond.
John, John, if you want to type in your question in the chat box, can you see that?
Or the simplest thing to do would be to hang up and just dial in and stay off. Well, I think it hears.
Right.
And Ms., Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question for Mr. Brock. Mr. Brock, uh, if Sanford prefers that after the coronavirus, these units are not going to be used for, uh, student housing, it can be dismantled, I change my vote from no to yes.
We've got part of what we're trying to do with, with converting this to regular student housing, uh, for some period of time after the coronavirus is try to recoup the $1.9 million investment that, that we're making to provide, uh, for this housing, um, which actually is, benefits the Homewood community because if we put these kids in, in, in university housing and run the risk of having a hotspot outbreak and, you know, it's just not a good situation. So, you know, to, to, to do that, um, is just, is, is, is throwing all that, throwing that money down a rat hole. And, um.
Well, I, I understand that, but I, I thought, uh, at the beginning of the conversation of the meeting, uh, the purpose was by everybody from Sanford that these units were built specifically to house, uh, sick people from the coronavirus. Now you're saying something different.
No, we said from the outset that the driver with this is the coronavirus crisis. And we've got to provide that type of, of housing, uh, for quarantine and isolation for students, which we cannot accommodate on our, on our main campus. And therefore, we, we looked at hotels, we looked at, 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 at many other options and came across this idea that we could build something like this for an intermediate term, use it for the coronavirus. And then after the coronavirus crisis has passed, we could use it as, um, uh, residential student housing for some period of time that would allow us to get some of our money back in that, that investment. It is not a long-term, um. What I would be willing to do, Mr. Cronteras, is, is to tie the term of the use of this property for, you know, for, for, for student housing to the, you know, to the remaining term of the, of, of the, declaration that we have for not using student, our, our housing around the campus on the north side for student housing and so forth, which I think is nine years.
Let me ask you a question. How quickly do they say this project can be completed from start to finish?
That, that is a very, that's a very great question. Um, what, uh, one of the first things we looked at was. That, that is a very, that's a very great question. What, one, first things we looked at was could we just bring in FEMA trailers? Because the time we have, we have to have this up for this whole model to work since return on the 20th. We have to have the homes in place and up and running on the 20th because there's two times that, that if you look at the patterns of how COVID seems to take over, is that there's the initial wave when students come. And as part of our overall protocols, all students are being tested prior to returning to reduce that number. But we can reasonably anticipate we will have some the day they come home. And ideally, we send them home, but you don't know if they fly in from California or something. So that's the first threshold. And the second is approximately two weeks later after they get together and, and if there's any asymptomatic cases that, that pass. So we have pushed everybody to a place where, so that this could be open and operating on the 20th, and that gives us 13 days. Candidly, if we don't start tomorrow morning, our ability to be open by 21st, by the 20th is, is largely rendered moot, and we would be opening ourselves up to not being able to handle that very first wave, which is the thing that has kept us up.
We already have about close to 200 athletes on campus. By the 17th, we'll have connections, students and, and, and all of the students involved with, with, with bringing back the rest of the students, probably another thousand, over a thousand students by the 17th. And then by the, well, no, by the, by the 17th, we'll have 2,400 residents plus additional students by the 17th, which is when they begin to move in. And then classes start on the 24th. So we just don't have a lot of time.
So let me ask the question. So what I've heard is when y'all have to meet the deadline, what has been done? These are, how many of our modular homes? Two, four, six, eight, 10, 12? How many have we, we got here? It, those aren't, those are manufactured and it takes time to get a manufactured incentive. So have you already put money down on these homes or what's going on? Because let's be realistic, 16 days from now, having these up is, I don't care, unless something's already been done, that's not going to happen.
Yes, those, we, 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 we have, we made the investment in the homes because otherwise it was a risk we've taken because there was no way we could deliver by the 20th, 20th without having done that. It was that important to us.
So y'all have already bought these homes? And what happens if this doesn't pass now? What's your plan B? Because I'm sure at a university of your size and with the people that are there are very intelligent, there has to be a plan B.
Could, could I inject something here, Mr. Brock? What, what, could you cut the duration even more than down to the nine? Would you go five years and look at, look at it again in five years, let the, whoever's sitting in the planning commission or the city council to, to look at extending that time if necessary, or if things may come up that you might take this out and have a, another project going in there?
You know.
I'm just throwing it out here, you know?
I don't know how to answer that. I just don't know how to answer that question. It, it will take longer than that, you know, to recruit, you know.
Right.
But to answer the earlier question, yes, we have taken, we have taken a risk here by ordering those units. And so we're committed to them. So to answer your question, if, 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 if this does not get approved, then, you know, we're in a pickle. And, and we'll be back to the drawing board entirely. You know, hence my appeal to a negative vote here that will allow us to, you know, to proceed. If I have no other, you know, choice, and we're, you know, forced to wait till Monday, we're forced to wait till Monday. But we would not be able to meet our deadline. And all the things that we've done for planning and the drawing and, and during this period of time, we have been in communicating with the, with the city, meeting with the staff. It's not like we've been, you know, operating in secret here. But we need to be prepared when our students start arriving in.
Mr. Brock, John Grant Harris again, one, one more question. Let's, let's say, praying God that there is absolutely no sick students until the coronavirus vaccine comes out. What are you going to do with those units?
If there are no, if there are no sick students?
Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Grant Harris, there will be sick students. Numbers just tell us that. We're beginning to do, you know, pre-entry testing, re-entry testing with students now. We're part of the guide state network that U A B has put together with all the universities in the state of Alabama, and they're testing 200,000 students between now and, you know, over the next few weeks. And what they're running at the moment is about 4% of, of students that, that are testing positive. You know, among our athletes, we had about 3%. Now, right now, we have athletes that are quarantined on campus in other housing because we don't have any other students on housing. So we could accommodate that. But it's going to happen. And, and I wish it wasn't going to happen, but it's going to happen. So what we can do, and all we can do is be as well prepared for this as we can with a variety of contingencies that we have in place. And this is a real.
Yeah, Mr. Brock, this is Jeff Foster. I completely understand the concerns you're raising. I guess, this is your 15 units, right? So what happens when you have, I mean, if you have an outbreak on your campus, it's more than 15?
Well, yes, and, and what.
And I guess that's, that's my, that's my concern is if that's the impetus, this is, this is wholly insufficient, and you're going to end up bringing trailers in or sending your kids home.
Buck, may I try this?
Yeah.
May I have a, a word?
The, um, one thing I understand is the, is the protocol that we're putting in place for that very concern that you raised. The idea is to take somebody immediately upon displaying any symptom at all and administer a test. And at that time, take them and put them in Lake, uh, Lake Shore Village to await the results of the test that should come within two, 24 to 48 hours. At that time, we are, we, we certainly are encouraging students to then go home and not, and not be quarantined. And that way we can maintain the throughput of Lake Shore Village so that the cases don't back up onto campus. And in doing it that way, we're essentially flattening our own curve. The idea is to keep the possibility of no active cases behind the gates. If we kept them there for the 10 to 14 days, the total volume of the building in any given month is somewhere between 30 and 40. If we see a two-day test period and, and take very good care of them during that time, the majority of our parents, 76% of our population lives within a six-hour drive. They will come and get their children, and that way we can, can maintain the larger throughput. So that's how we're addressing the capacity problem issue by looking at exactly what percentage are within how many hours of drive time of campus? And, and by limiting to the, the short-term stay. Because again, the idea is not to put them back into the dorms because that creates the hotspot with asymptomatic things, creates an explosion in our campus and in the broader community around us. So, so it's a great question about managing the volume, but that's how we chose to deal with it. It's the only way we could see to prevent cases was create a, if you will, a waste station type of.
Yeah, but I don't. Gentlemen from Sanford, according to the medical news, and I have a couple of people in the medical January, or maybe even February, there would be a vaccine, which means those units, they're not going to have to be used for the sick students. So what are you going to do with them?
They would. Our plan, our plan would be that they would convert them to, to student housing. And we would operate.
That's what, that's what I, I suspect. Yes, sir.
Which is a.
So the long, the long, the long-term decision on these units is to have additional student housing. That's the way it looks to me like.
John, this is Billy. They've said from day, from, from the very beginning of the discussion, the impetus is the coronavirus and their ability to address it. Despite what's being put in the media, we're on this call tonight and not meeting in person because they advise against that. They're unsure of how well this vaccine is going to work. There have been reports that this could go on for a couple of years, and there have been reports that this could never end. So this could be in place and in use for Corona for a couple of years. It could be for a few months. We don't know. They have committed to spend $1.9 million on this investment to do this for the safety of their students. If I heard correctly, 76% of their students live within a six-hour drive. They are trying to address the 24% that does not. And I guess that equates to 15 units in lieu of 14 or 16 or 18. Again, from the very beginning, they said they're spending $1.9 million to address this problem, but they're going to leave it up and they're going to use it as special interest student housing. That's my term. That's not what they said. But it's a flexible as long, for a period so that they can recoup the $1.9 million. Every college campus is tasked with this. U A B is. U A B has converted one of their oldest dorms for that purpose.
Mr. Grant Harris, if your concern is that this is some sort of backhanded way for us to create, you know, regular student housing, I can assure you, sir, that is not the case. That is not the case whatsoever. We cherish our relationship and, and integrity with the city far more than that, Mr. Grant Harris. This is driven strictly and initially by the COVID virus. And then how do we, what can we do to recoup that $1.9 million that we're having to spend? We don't want to spend it, but we need, we've got to do this to protect our students, and protecting our students is also helping protect the residents of City of Homewood. You know, so these people just don't go out and get an apartment or go in a hotel room, for that matter, where we would not have any control over these folks.
Well, it also, I, I would argue that it also protects the City of Homewood because if, if you took some of the existing houses that you have and placed them into those houses.
Well, yes, but, but can you, can you?
Can I, can I finish my statement? Thank you.
Can you, can you double up in the main, can you not double up in the main campus?
John, the whole idea.
Yes, sir.
Behind quarantine is to isolate, to separate, not double up.
I think it's also worth remembering just this past March, when we were forced to send all of our students home. That is a real economic hit to the communities, a real economic hit to the university, and we had to refund millions of dollars. So it is very important for all of us to maintain the operations of the university.
Eight million, $5.8 million we refunded in housing fees because we sent everybody home.
So, you know, there is a, there's a health interest, there's obviously a financial interest. The health interest comes first clearly. And the best way we figured out how to do it was remove the potentially infected person from the population. And, and that is, that, that is the best hope we have to maintain an ongoing operation throughout the entire semester. Because, and, and I assure you, as chief strategy officer, every single night for six months, I study these numbers as part of my job. And we will, mathematically, there's no dispute. We will have cases of COVID on our campus this fall. And so we, the question is, how do we maintain the ongoing operation of the business, of the university? So as to prevent that type of spread. And we could think of no other way than clear removal from the population and creating that, and creating that barrier in between. But I think, you know, Buck said it well, none of us wanted to spend this money. We would very much rather not spend the money. And if we were going to spend $1.9 million, we'd rather do it in, uh, in a more traditional way. We just have this combination of an immediate crisis, and what is the best way to invest the money? And so we're investing substantially more than we otherwise would in just a FEMA trailer answer because we didn't think that matched the expectations of, of our parents and it's the city around us. We're trying to find the happy median between the two. But under no circumstances, as Buck has indicated, would we do this as the, a permanent housing solution from this, from the get-go? That's grossly inconsistent with everything we've ever done. We just find ourselves kind of caught in the middle here.
Well, Mr. Brock, I have not seen any movement on this discussion in several minutes. Your options are to continue to hold out for, or make a concession or this goes to council. What would you like to do?
We'll go to council.
Thank you. All right, moving right along, item number three, P C case A D two zero dash zero eight dash zero three. This is the amended development plan for this same project. Fred, would you please call the roll?
All right. Mr. Foster?
No.
Chief Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Grant Harris?
No.
Mr. Riddle? Yes, yes, all right. Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes. Again, four to four. Thank you, uh, Mr. Brock and your team. I'm sure you'll be on the phone with city officials first thing in the morning. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much. And I'm sorry we took up so much of your time. I know you've got other things to do, but thank you very much. We appreciate it. Good night.
Good night. Right, moving right along, item number four, P C case F D two zero dash zero eight dash zero four. This is a final, there, there are actually two cases. It's item number four and item number five. We're going to hear it as one case and then we'll vote on it separately. Item number five is P C case A D two zero dash zero eight dash zero five. The applicant is Charles Dalphin, Patriot Village. Mr. Dalphin, do you want to present your case?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. We come before you and the planning commission members. Appreciate your service to the city. It goes without saying, it takes up a lot of your time and a lot of, a lot of your, a lot of time out of your jobs and the things you do. And I just, I just want to tell you thank you. We come before you again tonight presenting the same plan that we presented last week, well, two weeks ago with no change. We're going from a preliminary development plan to the.
I think the applicant is having technical difficulties.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you now.
Okay. Could you hear us? Could you hear me when I was presenting?
Well, I heard, what I heard was the same as two weeks ago, and then it kind of went dead for several seconds.
Okay, uh, we come, we come back for you guys with the same development. Okay. We come, we come back for you guys with the same development plan that we presented as a preliminary development plan with no changes to the plan at all.
Okay. Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. We'll open this up to the public forum and we'll wait a few seconds to see if anybody has entered anything in the chat. Okay, the message. All right, thank you, Mr. Wallace. Moving right along, does any commission members have any questions of the applicant? Okay, there are no questions of the applicant. I'll entertain a motion to approve PC case FD 20-08-04.
No move. Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Riddle and a second by Mr. Cronteras. Fred, would you please call the roll?
Excuse me, is, is this the vote to approve the amended development plan?
Yes, it is. I'm sorry.
For contingency.
Yes, you did. And I, based on the length of the pass case, I forgot that. I would offer that we, that, that we accept an amendment to the motion that part of the requirements was that it go before an architectural review committee. That has been dissolved. Staff has asked that they have the ability to, let's see, I'll read what she said. Recommendation contingent upon staff's review and compliance with the Wildwood subdivision regulations. Or the, I guess, the original agreement by the developer. And I guess I'm asking the applicant, would you offer that? Do you agree to, would you proffer to agree to that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm asking this as an amendment. I believe, Mr. Riddle, would you offer, would you accept this as an amendment to your? To the motion that you approved?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Higginbotham.
And a second, Mr. Cronteras?
Yeah, the same, the same with me.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, Ms. Smith. Fred, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, all right. Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Chief Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Cronteras?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yes, and I also misspoke last week. Our client, it's a client of ours who was building another mini store. I had the addresses incorrect. So I apologize for that last week. I verified it after we got off the phone two weeks ago. So I apologize about that, guys. But yes, I'm for it.
Right. And lastly, Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes, it looks like that's approved eight to zero. Moving right along, I'd entertain a motion to approve PC case AD 20-08-05. This is the amended development plan.
No move.
Second, second.
We've got a motion by Mr. Riddle and I believe a second by Mr. Woods. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Fred, would you please call the roll?
All right. Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Chief Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Cronteras?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes. Looks like it's eight oh. Your case is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. Fred, we'll be there and see you tomorrow.
All right.
Thank you. All right, moving right along. Item number six. Re- recommendations for nominating commission, committee for position of planning commission chairman and vice chairman. Mr. Riddle, I'd ask you to work on that. Do you have anything to report?
I apologize that I don't really, it was shortly, I'm two weeks and I had so much going on and I didn't get any offers on my emails of anyone that would serve on the committee. So it'll probably be, it'll be in the next September's planning commission meeting when I have this for you.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Okay.
I think September is our actual deadline. And I've got a little bit earlier jump on it than I have in the past couple of years.
Right. And I'm glad you did that because we normally forget about it. But I would like, whomever would like to serve with me on this commission, committee, would, if you would email as such, I'd certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. And if there are no other questions, comments, or concerns, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn?
Before we do, I would like to congratulate Nick Hill on a well-earned congratulations, chief. That is a well-earned and well-deserved promotion and congratulations to you. Looking forward to having you serve our city in that great role and congratulations.
Here, here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, I second that. Any further comments?
Yeah, Billy, can you hang around? Sorry.
I'm Mr. Higginbotham. Did y'all set subcommittee meeting for, to take care of the, the way we know the meetings?
Yes, we did on the 18th. We're gonna.
Okay, I'm sorry. I missed it. Just want to make sure it got done.
That's okay. Any further questions, comments?
Yeah, Billy, can you just hang around for just a second? It won't take but just a minute, just some house, housekeeping duties.
Yes, yes, I'll, I'll hang on. Well, if there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion and a second to adjourn.
Tag it.
Okay, I think it was Woods that made the motion and Riddle seconded. All in favor? Any opposition? All right, thank you, gentlemen, for your great service.